Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March sixth, two thousand and twenty four Public Board Meeting of the Halton District School Board. I would like to extend a special welcome to our guests, especially our reward, award recipients, both in person and online. Trustees are present, both in person and online as well. Joining us in person are trustees Amos Baxter Bryden, Danielli Gray, Oliver Rocha Shuttleworth and Zhang, as well as student trustees Shrub Allen and Alum Zanoff. Trustee Ahmed is joining us online. Director Ennis, please let us know which staff are in attendance this evening.
Thank you so much, Chair Collard. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This evening, we have a full complement of senior staff here to support tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Tonight trustee Alum Zanoff will be honoring the land.
Thank you, Chair Collard. Halton, as we know today, is the tradition, history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Ottawa, the Adnasoni and the Métis, these lands around in Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on the treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions, land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that occupy forests, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you. We will now have a moment of silence to honor former Prime Minister Brian Mulrooney, who passed away on February twenty ninth. Thank you. At the first meeting of each month, we formally acknowledge the history and heritage months and days identified by the Government of Ontario. Please join us in celebrating and supporting the diverse communities that exist within our Halton communities. This month, we recognize Irish and Bangladeshi Heritage Months. Trustee, trustee Gray will be speaking to Irish Heritage Month.
Thank you very much, as I have a great history on my mother's side of this, this area, and so I'm very, it's Scottish on my father's side. So I'm very happy to bring this forward tonight. Irish immigrants were among the very earliest settlers in Canada. In eighteen forty five, Irish immigrants fleeing the potato famine in Ireland began settling in Ontario in large numbers. They brought to Ontario and Canada their values of hard work, devotion to family, service to the community, and the perpetual hope for a better future for themselves and their fellow citizens. Ontario citizens of Irish descent made significant contributions to the founding of Canada. They have made and continue to make significant contributions to the development of Canada, especially over the more than a hundred and fifty years since the first large waves of Irish immigration. It is important to recognize and celebrate those contributions. Today, the rich cultural heritage of Canada's Irish community is an integral part of Canadian national culture and identity, and it belongs by right to all Canadians of all backgrounds. As evident of that fact, the Code of Arms of Canada bears several symbols of Irish heritage, the Royal Harp of Terra, representing historic coronation place of the High King, and the Shamrock and Cross of Saint Patrick. That concludes my Irish Heritage Day moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Gray. I will be speaking to Bangladeshi Heritage Month. Many Bangladeshi Canadians call Halton home. They make significant contributions to our cultural, political, scientific, and athletic development, helping our community prosper. March twenty sixth, nineteen seventy one was the day Bangladesh gained independence. Celebrations are held every year on March twenty sixth by Bangladeshis around the world to celebrate their history and traditions. Please join me in celebrating the twenty sixth of March with our Bangladeshi community members. We are now up to item one point five, approval of the agenda. Trustee Ahmed, would you make a motion to approve the agenda? Trustee Amos, would you make a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'd like to move the agenda.
Thank you. Trustee Baxter, would you like to second this motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding the approval of the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. I'm sorry? Oh, Nivee just came in. Okay, wonderful. Yes, Shin Yi, sorry, trustee Zhang.
Is it the right time to, I, I was suggested to pull two A B's from the report?
Not yet. We haven't got to the consent agenda yet, though. Thank you. I will, I will remind you when we get there. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest for this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we are now up to item two point zero, delegations presentations to the board. And the first item is two point one, the Inspire Awards. I will pass the gavel to trustees Gray and Shuttleworth, the co-chairs of the Inspire Awards to preside over this evening's awards.
Thank you very much, Chair Collard. As always, it's my honor and privilege to be involved with the Inspire Awards. And for those of you who don't know, an Inspire Award is given to individual or groups that formally or informally that are associated with the school board, who support our students in their achievements through caring, initiative, innovation, and creativity. Tonight, we have seven awards, three of which have joined us to celebrate here tonight, and four who have had their, are going to have chosen to have their awards presented within their school community with the support at their school. So those who have chosen to receive their awards at their school include Cheryl Collette and Melanie Carr from E W Foster, Duncan Cairns from Martin Street Primary School, Jennifer Murray from P L Robertson, and Paul Giannotti from Nelson High School. Congratulations to all of these inspiring people who will be receiving their awards at their schools, and I know the trustees look forward to celebrating with you and your school community. We are also honored to have with the three of the nominees joining us tonight to receive their awards. So without further ado, let's hear about these amazing people. And we're going to start with Janet Duransky, who is from Bruce Trail Public School, and trustee Danielli will be presenting the award. All right, so let's hear a little bit about Janet. As a teacher at Bruce Trail Public School, Janet exemplifies exceptional care and dedication. Throughout the pandemic, when students were learning from home, Janet consistently made herself available to students and offered unwavering support on problems big and small. Recognizing the challenges of isolation during lockdowns, she went above and beyond by personally funding prizes and organizing interactive group projects to foster connection and engagement. Beyond academic endeavors, Janet prioritized her students' well-being and sense of community by creating an online yearbook filled with cherished memories for students to look back on. Janet's innovative teaching method set her apart as an educator. Amid the shift to virtual learning, she seamlessly adapted her approach, delivering captivating and informative lessons that left a lasting impact on her students. She tackled challenging topics with patience and clarity, even collaborating with colleagues to provide comprehensive explanations tailored to her students' needs. She addresses real-world issues such as equity, social justice, and mental health, fostering a holistic educational experience. Her unwavering dedication to her craft and her students' growth continues to inspire and influence not only her students' academic pursuits, but also their personal development and character. Congratulations and thank you so much, Janet. Next up, we have a student from Iroquois Ridge. Trustee Rocha will be presenting the award, and I'm going to pass it over to our student trustees to read a little bit about this amazing student.
Kalina Cocken distinguishes herself as a caring and proactive student leader within the Iroquois Ridge High School community by demonstrating unwavering commitment to the well-being and academic success of her peers. Going beyond the conventional student roles, she actively engages the students on a personal level, offering support and guidance. Through initiatives such as mentorship program and workshops on mindfulness and stress management, Kalina addresses the unique challenges students face, fostering a supportive network and promoting emotional well-being. Her caring nature is complemented by a remarkable initiative, as evidenced by her leadership in implementing project-based learning modules that enhance critical thinking skills and traditional collaboration among students. Kalina's strategic initiatives not only elevate the quality of education within her school, but also position her as a trailblazer in educational innovation.
And there's more. Moreover, Kalina's ingenuity shines through her introduction of a virtual reality enrichment program, providing immersive learning experiences that deepen comprehension and foster creativity among her peers. Her creativity, adoption of technology to suit the curriculum's specific needs, showcase her dedication to pushing educational boundaries and inspiring collaborative learning environments. Kalina's transformative impacts extend beyond her immediate interactions, as her initiatives inspire students to embrace learning with enthusiasm and purpose, contributing positively to their communities. Through her compassionate leadership and innovative spirit, Kalina cultivates a positive and supportive culture within the school, leaving a lasting legacy of empowerment and inspiration among her fellow students. Personal note, Sultan and I are very lucky to work with Kalina on the daily. She's one of our outstanding senators for years and years, and she's just a bundle of joy whenever we get to see her. So we love working with you. We're so glad we got to see you in the boardroom and recognized tonight, and congratulations once again.
Thanks, Sharina and Sultan, and congratulations, Kalina. Next up, we have Paul Fournier from Odenawi Public School, and trustee Amos will be presenting to him the award. All right, so is everybody ready to hear a little bit about Paul? Paul is a dedicated music teacher at Odenawi, who demonstrates an unparalleled level of care and commitment to his students' well-being and success. His mornings, afternoons, and breaks are consistently devoted to providing extra help, facilitating instrumental practice, running a drum line in bands, and organizing various musical activities. During the challenges of the pandemic, Paul exhibited remarkable initiative by completely revamping his music program to adapt to remote learning, even creating the school's first drum line to keep music education thriving. Despite the uncertainty, Paul went above and beyond ordering instruments and mastering new skills to ensure his students' continued music development. Paul empowered students to pursue their passion and to take ownership of their learning. He arranges for professional musicians to conduct workshops, offering insight into music careers and inspiring students to follow their dreams. Beyond his professional duties, Paul's unwavering positivity and kindness inspire everyone around him. Even when life gets busy taking care of his own children, Paul's enthusiasm and energetic approach never falter. His resilience and dedication serve as a source of inspiration, reminding others to focus on achieving desired outcomes rather than dwelling on obstacles. As Paul often says, if you have a problem and there is a solution, you don't really have a problem. Congratulations, Paul.
Congratulations to all our recipients this evening.
So we, so yes, a special thank you. Also, we have a new person at the helm who helps us to get all the information. So I would like to say a special thank you to Hawa Oyambo, who is the new person to support trustees in making sure they have all the information to assess the nominees. Now, I want to remind you all that Inspire Awards are a great way to celebrate the many unsung heroes of the H D S B. I'm now going to pass it over to trustee Gray, who's going to speak about the work that's been done to highlight and uplift our Inspire Award nomination process.
Well, just very quickly, more than a year ago, a committee came together to review the process, and I'm delighted to say that we have rolled it out. It's now live on our H D S B website. So anyone wishing to nominate a candidate, please go to the website where you will find a video starring our own trustees Rubalan and Alice Binzkov, and also the evaluation guide and nomination form, which are all new. So I urge anyone who has a notion to nominate someone for Inspire Award, to please visit the H D S B website. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now we're up to item two point two, student trustee report. Trustees Shrub Allen and Alum Zanoff, we are looking forward to your report.
Thank you, Chair Collard, as always. Hello, hello to those in the boardroom and those tuning in online. Trustee Alum Zanoff and I couldn't be happier to be in the boardroom again with you all today. We come to you with updates from one of our busier months with Senate, our infamous student trustee elections, and attending the Education Act and Conference with Osta Eko, all taking place. Starting off with Senate updates, our March Senate meeting is to take place following the March break on March nineteenth at the Milton Staff Learning Center. It is taking place an hour earlier than usual, out of respect for those fasting in celebration of Ramadan. The meeting is themed around global engagement, and we're excited to have meaningful conversations with our senators surrounding resources within the Welcome Center, supporting the international and newcomer students of our boards, and utilizing local charities to provide monetary support to our community's most vulnerable.
Moving on, after the very popular attendance of Superintendent Fowler at one of our previous Senate meetings, trustees Shrub Allen and I organized a little follow-up activity for senators to ask questions to Ms. Fowler and provided their input on the developments of the board. With thirty-plus attendees, we discussed such important topics as waiving, vandalism, and establishment of safe inclusive spaces. Some highly intriguing recommendations were given, including growing the relationship between students and custodial staff, providing more counseling to students for social integration, and spreading awareness of negative effects of substance abuse.
With that, the Environmental Leadership Senate Subcommittee co-chairs have connected with staff environmental committee leads to envision the execution of this year's Environmental Sustainability Leadership Awards. The committee's timeline this, the year to include applications for interested student eco-activists to apply for the award, staff and students to sit on the award's decision committee, and plans to present the Environmental Leadership Awards at our final June Senate meeting of the school year for those in the room who are looking to attend. We can't wait to hear from and recognize environmental change makers of all ages within the H T S B to further our commitment towards combating climate change. On the, on a late, on a last note about the Senate, we also want to highlight some other awesome initiatives happening within our Senate, because our senators never don't keep busy, including a Women's History Month initiative led by our Milton Regional Director, as well as a battery drive, again led by our Environmental Subcommittee, taking place at schools across Halton.
Next, we're going to move on to the main piece of work trustees Shrub Allen and I dedicated ourselves over the past month, being the student trustee elections. Let's just say that this year, all the records are broken. At twenty-four students, we have the highest number of candidates running for the position this year, who since the start of February, February fifth, have dedicated themselves to the campaign and work. To facilitate the process in these distress, we made some new additions this year, specifically drop-in Q and A sessions, which were available to all candidates at five P M. during the first week of the election, run by election officer Asha Dewan and the two student trustees. Furthermore, trustees Shrub Allen took the initiative to create a group chat to allow all the candidates to chat with one another, share ideas, playing a big role in building a very healthy and supportive environment throughout the election period.
With that, for the first time in Senate trustee elections' histories, a voters' package was put together for all students to have all the information and resources they need to make informed votes for their student trustees, from candidate campaign information to elections timelines to voting links. This was in response to students expressing their confusion and accessibility lackings of various election components, all of which are located in different places and are released at different points in the campaigning process. To combat this, a video was filmed and included in this package of student trustees and a Senate election officer, expressing the importance of voting and how to go about making that educated vote in student trustees' elections, with the hope of the video being used for future years to come. The package was sent out to all administrations, school administrations with eligible voters, and shown by classroom teachers as a lead-up to student trustee elections.
And finally, on February twenty-second came Voting Day, with students from grade seven to twelve being able to cast their votes for their two preferred candidates up until five thirty P M. Taking feedback from the successful trial of in-person voting in Oakville-Trafalgar High School and Dr. Frank J. Hayden Secondary School, run by predecessors trustee Roger and trustee Wang, this year, we decided to take a bit, a step further and bring in a person component to every school in Halton. We tasked our student senate to run over seventy-five information booths, booths at their respective schools, providing them with materials, including stickers and posters. This change ultimately resulted in the highest voter turnout in the history of the board, bringing in over fifty-four hundred voters, which was, which was more than double the numbers from the years prior. Following the voting, the results of the election were announced by Director Ennis during a Google Meet held at six P M. that same evening. And of that, we would also like to congratulate the two winners of the two thousand and twenty-four student trustee elections, being Caitlin Hu from Abbey Park High School and Shirley Ocho from Oakville-Trafalgar High School. This year, both the students are in grade ten and are ready to start their term in August. And yeah, trustees Shrub Allen and I had a great opportunity to meet them, and we'll be delighted to have them attend one of our board meetings closer to the end of the school year. And having said that, we would like to extend our deepest appreciation to all staff and students who made this election possible, from our Senate staff advisors to our senators running the election booths, to Susan Thrasher from the Director's Office, as well as Greg and Derek from the I T. This revolutionary voter turnout would not be possible without you.
Another huge shout-out to all twenty-four of our amazing candidates. Being a student trustee candidate is no easy feat. Trustee Alum Zanoff and I will never forget the stress of creating social media posts, navigating, creating posters, writing speeches, and interacting with hundreds of students across the region. I learned some key aspects of student voice more through campaigning than I have in my entire term, so it's vital that these students are recognized and applauded for their dedication and passion for the H T S B. As a small token of our appreciation, we worked with the communications departments to print certificates which are being sent out to each student trustee candidate to motivate them in spearheading change across the H T S B and beyond. Post-elections, trustee Alum Zanoff and I are engaging in several debrief sessions with the I D department, our lovely student trustee mentors, and Senate staff advisors as to how to improve student trustee election processes and Senate student voice structures as a whole. Priorities for next year include finding opportunities for candidates to take part in student advocacy, regardless of elections, investing in education to ensure students are making informed votes, and further simplicity of the voting experience. A major update for February also was trustee Alum Zanoff and I's experience at Osta Eko's Education Action Conference. The two of us headed down to Ottawa to engage in professional development, as well as advocacy initiatives with student trustees across the province. I'm sure it was a blast for all of us who attended. One of our key contributions to the conference was being fortunate enough to give an Osta talk on how student trustees across the province can bring the conversation surrounding artificial intelligence back to their boards, whether on the trustees, staff, or within their student body levels. Given trustee Alum Zanoff and I's dedication of a good portion of our term to investigating how student trustees can introduce A I into their student advocacy work, it was an honor to present our progress to hundreds of student leaders across the province and encourage them to take action on topics so relevant to our education system for the next few years.
Coming alongside the A I talk, trustee Shrub Allen and I ran an interactive marketplace session. It served as an extension of the speech, providing other student trustees across Ontario to ask questions and get the necessary tools and information to also begin advocacy work on integration of artificial intelligence within their respective boards. The marketplace included several vital conversations and education, from Bill ninety-eight to food literacy programs, to rural transportation, to special education programs, allowing trustees to not only learn about these, to not only have these conversations, but also have action items to take back to their boards and their work.
We're fortunate enough to also have the time to break out into our respective advocacy interest groups at Osta Eko to collaborate with a few student trustees on the provincial advocacy recommendations to the ministry, as well as on behalf of Osta Eko. Trustee Alum Zanoff and I are a part of the Curriculum and School Community Advocacy Interest Group. Currently, the two of us alongside our committee are working on devising a resource package for students looking for strategies and opportunities as to how to succeed in high school, from study habits to balancing workloads to extracurricular activities, with some of the most involved student leaders across the province. Alongside some social media promotion of this work, we're excited to inspire the next generation of leaders, especially students who could one day step into our roles as student trustees.
Lastly, we had the opportunity to attend some intriguing P D sessions on crucial topics such as cybersecurity, networking styles, and shaping identity as a student trustee. We would greatly like to appreciate Osta Eko and the leadership team for providing us with this opportunity. And on that note, And on that note, trustee Shrebalan and I conclude this evening's student trustee reports. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. As always, you guys shine. In one month, you managed to accomplish so much. Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you. I have a question for you both. So, you spoke of the elections, and I know that you spoke of voters from grade 7 to 12. I know that this year, you have incorporated junior councils? So, I'm wondering, have you considered the opportunity of expanding voting down to grade 6 or grade 5?
Okay, sorry. So, we have not had this conversation as of yet. It's definitely something to look into, just because in the past, we didn't really have that representation from those grade 5 and 6 students, but now, with junior council being integrated, it's certainly a topic that we can further engage in fruitful conversations.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our speakers list, and thank you very much for your report. We are now up to items under Section 3, our consent agenda. For approval, we have the Halton District School Board minutes meeting February 7, 2024. For receipt, we have the following information items: Order paper, or report schedule, policy and governance procedure review schedule, administrative procedure review schedule, approved minutes of the Committee of the Whole, January 17, 2024, discriminatory and harmful language data collection, report 24029, 2022-2023 Annual Transportation Report, report number 24030, 2024-2025 Annual Home-to-School Transportation Review Exemptions, report 24038, and correspondence to the board from a number of school boards throughout Ontario. Be it resolved at the Halton District School Board, approve the consent agenda, and receive the information items for November 15, 2023. Not for November 15, 2023, for March 6, 2024. I'll have to update that one. Trustee Baxter, would you like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I would, and I'd like to pull an item if that's okay as well, please.
Okay. Trustee Bryden, would you second this motion?
Yes.
Okay, are there any comments regarding items to be polled? Please put yourself on the speakers list. Trustee Zhang.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to request to poll two APs from the report 24027. One is the Public Concern AP, the other one is Agenda Identity and Agenda Expression AP.
And trustee Baxter.
Thank you. I'd like to just reiterate the request to pull 3.2.4, but on a different topic than trustee Zhang, and also 3.2.6, please, which is report 24029. Oh, the Distribution of Materials, please.
And trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you. I would just like to pull item 3.2.8, Annual Home-to-School Transit, oh, no, not Review? Yes, 3.2.8, the Annual Home-to-School Transportation Review of Exemptions.
We will start with the request to poll three APs, and I will ask for your questions regarding those APs. Trustee Zhang, the first two, the Public Concerns and the Gender Identity.
Okay, so first, there is the Public Concern AP. This AP has mentioned there's an exclamation chain. So, once the problem not resolved at the principal level, then will be excluded to the senior team, including superintendent and deputy director. But our website doesn't have any content information for the senior team, only have their assistants' content information. To match the AP and our website, there are two suggestions. Either we post the senior team's content information on our website, or we update the AP to say all the parents' public concern need to raise to the senior team's assistant or their office. So, this is the first. And the second is...
Trustee Zhang, just wait for the response, please.
Sure. I thank you for the question, trustee Zhang. The way that our offices are organized, the assistant to the superintendent is the superintendent in terms of receiving any kind of concern a parent or community may have, and so that is the channel and the conduit through which they can do so. They will always get someone. Superintendents are always in meetings, in school visits, doing a number of the different things, and so the executive assistant is actually the most appropriate person to receive that call and will ensure a response.
Okay, the second about the Gender Identity and Gender Expression AP, because last, in two weeks ago, in the Committee of the Whole meeting, I pointed out that there are eight key issues. So, I just, today, I just want to address the two issues. One is in the Section 5. The Section 5 has, so our school, we are actively promoting accepting schools. That means the schools has in a passive position, but Section 5 asks all the teachers to do something, is make the school board in an active position to promoting the political ideologies. So, this is, I have concern about that. And another thing is about the washroom, changing room, shower location, and the sports. So, world athletics already banned transgender athletics, so last year, this is the new regulation, world regulation. So, we need to consider, if we have those APs in practice, then what is the liability we will have? This is potential liability. For example, if there's any crime or any injury, sports athlete injury, then we need to take the responsibility. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, trustee Zhang. Certainly, we have taken a lot of things into consideration when formulating this AP, including making sure that we are in compliance with the Ontario Human Rights Charter of Rights and making sure that we're in compliance with the Ministry of Education. I'm going to ask Superintendent Petkow if she'd like to speak further to this.
Sorry. Thank you, Director Ennis, through you, Chair Collard. The Halton District School Board does not promote political movements. We're committed to providing an inclusive and welcoming environment for all students and staff, as reflected in our commitments in the Halton District School Board multi-year plan and in alignment with ministry mandates and directives, and ultimately, the Ontario Human Rights Code. The Ministry of Education's provincial legislative and policy framework sets out expectations for school boards in schools across Ontario to promote safe, accountable, and inclusive learning environments, including supporting and promoting student achievement, wellbeing, and safety for our 2S and LGBTQ+ students. Equality rights are at the core of the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, and they are intended to ensure that everyone is treated with the same respect, dignity, and consideration regardless of personal characteristics, such as religion, sexual orientation. So, when you posed the question, trustee Zhang, around teachers being required to include instructional materials with a range of gender identities, expressions, and attractions, I think was your question. Our teachers and our teaching staff absolutely have to ensure that their programming materials, that their classroom spaces, that their learning environments are inclusive, are representative of all identities, including our 2S and LGBTQ+ community. So, we are not singling out students. We are not, we are not only focusing on this community. What we are doing is following the mandates and the directives of our Ministry of Education Minister, who himself said that school boards are now indeed required, encouraged and required to ensure a sense of belonging for all of our students, but in particular, our students who belong to the 2S and LGBTQ+ community. You can read that in a news release that was put out with Minister Letche being quoted in July of 2022.
Careful up.
Yes, you can follow up.
So, we are for Section 5, and so, all the teachers and the students and their families, they have their values and they have their religious base. If we must have an inclusive school, so to include all the background from all the students, this is our, the clients we are serving, the different background, that makes us, we respect all the diversity community. And all their values and religious belief, this is their constitutional rights, and our board have no, our AP cannot supersede any constitutional rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your questions, trustee Zhang. Moving on to the next speaker, Carol. Trustee Baxter, would you please speak to your concerns regarding distribution of materials?
Yes, thank you through the chair. I sent an email to all trustees, or copied all trustees earlier on an email to Director Ennis, so I won't reiterate the entire email, but just briefly, I do have some concerns that I shared at the Committee of the Whole meeting, and I just wanted to follow that up with some specific questions to Director Ennis regarding the position that the board does not endorse any organization or materials that are distributed. I was just wondering if a legal review of risk to the board has been conducted, and if so, can it be shared with trustees?
Thank you for the question, trustee Baxter. So, this is something that we are actively exploring, and we are seeking some guidance around that. When we get a response, we will have more information for the board.
Please proceed.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm just wondering, this AP was one of the ones listed in the report as finalized and updated, so I was just wondering if that could maybe be put back in the under-revision category, if it's not, if that review is not finalized? And then, my secondary question was specifically around which organizations the board is tacitly promoting by distributing materials for. I think there is a distinction between a governmental organization and a community nonprofit group, just in terms of the accountability and oversight on those two, and I was just wondering if there's any consideration of perhaps restricting distribution of materials from governmental organizations like, you know, public health and those types of organizations that, that I think are quite distinct and much easier for both the board and individual principals to determine our appropriate for board distribution.
So, I'm happy to remove this in terms of the process, and so that we can bring back some updates and take a closer look at this, trustee Baxter.
Thank you so much.
Did you wish to speak to the discriminatory language? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Again, through you, Chair. I just wanted to thank Superintendent Fowler for responding so quickly with some updated data on that report, or for creating the report, because it was only a recent request for it, so I appreciate that. So, the data that you had provided, which was a bit of a breakout of the hate and bias motivated suspensions, I was just wondering if that could be included in the next suspensions and expulsions report that is coming to board, I think, fairly soon this spring, as per the schedule? Thank you.
Thank you very much, through you, Chair, to trustee Baxter. Thank you so much for the question or suggestion. So, if I can just clarify, what you're looking to have is the data specifically related to that suspension code added to the suspension data, suspension and expulsion report that I'm preparing to bring on April 3rd.
Yes, through the chair to Superintendent Fowler. You know, the data that you shared today, there is an increase, and so I think that, just year over year, I know that the coding has changed and the definitions have changed, but I am perceiving a bit of an increase this year over last year in hate and bias-related instances. So, I think it's something that trustees would appreciate having in that report, so that we can discuss how that's being addressed at the board. So, thank you.
Sure, yes, absolutely. I can add that as a specific portion and additional appendix, and then be prepared to speak to that, because as you can imagine, there's, we do have a lot of data, and we've changed that code, so I will speak to that more fulsomely at the board meeting on April 3rd. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And next on the speakers list is trustee Shuttleworth regarding transportation.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, and I don't know if this will be the Superintendent Nagoy or just a general comment. So, I noticed that the exemptions, there's been several that have been pulled. I was aware of them because I used to go to these meetings, but it states that there's a letter going out to the community. I couldn't access the letter, so I'm wondering when that letter is going out? So, I know that there was one for McQuendum, Pineland, and Mohawk, which all will impact people within my community, so I'm just wondering when the letter, I couldn't, when I clicked on it, it said access denied.
And for the chair, the letter is going out later in March, so we wanted to do this as early as possible. Last year, it was towards the end of the school year. I also want to mention that this would be a reminder, because the original letter was sent out in June of last year, so those particular exemptions were identified in 2023 for September 2024, and we want, going forward, to ensure that there is as much notice to parents as possible, so that they will be coming out. We just wanted to bring the report to the board first. And there is a change to one of those exemptions, so there's a smaller area for the exemption, and a community is still going to receive transportation after a second review.
And if I can have a follow-up on that as well? So, when you then look down to why the exemptions are there, by and large, many of the exemptions are due to the fact that we just don't have crossing guards. So, what I'm wondering, and I know HSTS is doing all that they can, but I'm wondering if there is anything that we as a school board are doing or can do to try to promote and encourage or recruit more crossing guards?
And through the chair to trustee Shuttleworth. The exemptions, these are a lot of historical exemptions that have been in place, many of them since there was either an infill in a particular area or is a new subdivision waiting for infrastructure. So, exemptions are in place for infrastructure until the walking infrastructure and the lights are on and functioning, et cetera. That is mostly the eligibility factors alongside with traffic, speed, et cetera. There are certain streets which would have a higher speed limit where we would work with the municipality for crossing guards. So, the crossing guards are not a school board employee or resource, and we have to work with the various municipalities. So, we do work collaboratively with them. Unfortunately, as with everything, it is based on availability, budget, but what they look at is they review the traffic in the area, they review the speed limit if it needs to be changed, speed bumps if they need to put in place, so other traffic calming measures, and that is done in conjunction with the municipality.
So, if I can have a follow-up? So, I just, I'm going to give you an example. So, for example, one of the areas, so Tom Thompson, it says that they have no crossing guard at Plains Road and Brant Street, so there is no, there is exemption in terms of children are able to catch that bus. So, although we are not, it's not our resource, we benefit from that resource. So, I'm just wondering, what, do we have any, I don't know, supporting plans that we, from the schools, promote crossing guard? Like, I know it's, I know it's a city resource, I know that they are employed through the city, and it's a partnership between the municipality and the school board, but as we are the beneficiary, I'm just wondering what types of things we are doing or could we do to either promote hiring, or are you saying then that they are saying that they don't have a crossing guard there, or they won't put one there?
And for the chair, thank you for the clarifying question. They will not put a crossing guard where they have a street light. And with these particular crossings, you're looking at Welfline, Plains, Brant, these are large arterial roads, so those are the ones where typically, an exemption will are large arterial roads, so those are the ones where typically an exemption will remain in place unless there is a crossing guard, even though there's a light, because of the speed limit, how many lanes the street has. From what we've seen, and it's pretty consistent across the four municipalities, if there is a street light, they don't typically have also a crossing guard. You will see them more where there is a stoplight or one of those, you know, press the button in order to, to walk and it's in the middle of a larger street. That's typically where the crossing guard will be and will ensure that the traffic stops for pedestrians to cross. And to your question in terms of what we can do is, we do, as I mentioned, meet with the municipality staff and discuss our concerns about areas where we think could benefit from crossing guards. It is typically an exercise of reallocation of resources for them as well, and it's based on their budget and budget approvals. Short of that, we do not have funding or a mandate for crossing guards and traffic calming measures.
All right, thank you. Just a quick closing comment. I just, I look at the number of exemptions that are due to no crossing guard and think of the cost and the safety issues that are involved there, and really wonder if there's a way, you know, when we're looking at trying to save money, this to me would be a, a pretty easy way to do it if we were working, like if the municipality were able to support us in that endeavor. So thank you.
And next speaker is Trustee Ahmed.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, Chair. Thank you. You answered some of my questions, Superintendent Nagoy. I just wanted to raise the same thing that can be just, like, find out what the equation is there, like, the cost process, like not having the crossing guard and providing them the transport, like, how does it work out in terms of, like, financing and financials and everything? So you already answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers on the list, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. We are now up to item 4.0, add items for ratification action. And the action items for March 6, 2024, start with 4.1.1, appointment of external auditor for 2023-2024 fiscal year, report 24028 submitted by Trustee Daniele. And I'm going to put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board authorize the appointment of the external audit firm Deloitte LLP to perform the annual financial statements audit and the agreed upon procedures report for the 2023-2024 fiscal year at a cost not to exceed $85,200 plus HST. Trustee Daniele, would you make this motion?
Yes, thank you, I would.
Trustee Rocha, would you second the motion?
I would.
And Trustee Daniele, would you like to speak to this report?
I would just be very brief. If the report is before you with all of the details, I would just remind you that it is coming to you because we are required to appoint an external auditor each fiscal year as cited in the Audit Committee Regulation 361-10. So that's my reminder, and I don't know if Superintendent Nagoy would have anything else to add.
She has no, no indication of interest to add to that. So, thank you very much, Trustee Daniele. Is there any debate? Seeing none, please cast your votes. That is unanimous. 4.1.2 is our next item, Iroquois Ridge High School renaming request, report 24031 submitted by Manager Francie and Superintendent Proto. Manager Francie and Superintendent Proto, would you like to speak to this report, please?
Thank you. To the chair, as you're aware, the HDSP received a formal request from a community member to consider renaming Iroquois Ridge High School. The board's school naming governance procedure indicates that the director shall forward renaming requests and rationale to the board, and where it appears that the request meets the criteria established in the governance procedure, an estimate of the cost of renaming the school will also be provided. Staff have reviewed the submitted rationale and have determined that it meets the criteria for initiating a review of the school name as outlined in the governance procedure. The recommendation provided in this report is in alignment with the HDSP multi-year plan, the HDSP Indigenous Education Policy, the Ontario Human Rights Commission, the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, and the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada Calls to Action. We have consulted with our treaty partner, who has expressed support for the recommendation, and receives the action in the spirit of raising awareness and a step towards reconciliation. The HDSP's Indigenous Rights and Education, Human Rights Equity and Inclusion Team, as well as our Human Rights and Equity Advisor, also support the name change. To avoid perpetuating further harm, I do want to highlight that our role here this evening is to not debate or negotiate the current name of the school, as it has already been confirmed to be inappropriate. We are here tonight because we received a formal request from a community member that meets the criteria established in the board's school naming governance procedure and is in alignment with the many policies, reports, and legal documents previously mentioned, which our board, local, provincial, and federal organizations are guided by.
Superintendent Proto, do you wish to add anything? Okay, I can certainly appreciate the research you've done to determine that Iroquois Ridge meets the criteria for a school renaming process. I am mindful of both the Truth and Reconciliation Calls to Action, as well as our own multi-year plan. One of the commitments of our multi-year plan is Indigenous Perspectives and Awareness, which calls us to promote knowledge and understanding of Indigenous realities, and specifically to provide opportunities for a whole community approach to understanding the impacts of colonialism, past and present, foster engagement with Indigenous peoples, communities, practices, perspectives, and realities to build awareness, mutual respect, and shared responsibility, enhance learning about treaty relationships, Indigenous rights, residential schools, and Indigenous peoples' contributions to Canada to fulfill the Truth and Reconciliation Calls to Action for education. It is important for us as treaty partners to seek out and understand the lived realities of the Indigenous peoples of this land. And so now I would like to put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the board initiate the renaming process for the secondary school at 1123 Glen Ashton Drive, Oakville, in accordance with the board's naming and renaming school policy and governance procedure. Trustee Rocha, would you make this motion?
I'll move the motion.
Thank you. Trustee Gray, would you second the motion?
Yes.
And I see we do have a speaker on the list, so please, if you do wish to speak, put your name on the list. And I believe as mover that Trustee Rocha does get priority to go first. Trustee Zhang, if you would mind me going with her first. Thank you. Go ahead, Trustee Rocha.
Thank you through you, Chair. So I appreciate the additional information that was shared with us this evening, but none of that was incorporated into the report. So when I read this report, and when the public reads the report, it's incomplete. And so we're being asked to vote on a report that was incomplete. And for that alone, I, I don't feel comfortable at all making a decision on what's presented in this report. The other thing I want to raise is that although I understand that the word Iroquois is deemed derogatory, the school is named Iroquois Ridge, and I don't see any history in why it was named Iroquois Ridge. So that would have been helpful in this process. And I think it goes to anytime the board receives a request to rename a school, it would be, it would be helpful to get a very fulsome picture of why it was named it in the first place, why it seemed to be, why it is deemed to be derogatory, which treaty partners were consulted. And with a price tag of $250,000, that's a quarter of a million dollars, and to me, that's extreme considering we're, we've got to balance a budget into, we're trying to salvage $8,000, $8 million next year. So there's a lot of things that are flashing red lights. So, and the other thing is, Iroquois Ridge High School is next door to the Iroquois Ridge Community Centre. And I think that if consideration is going to be given to rename a high school, we should definitely speak with our treaty partners, but we should also speak with the town of Oakville, because it's not just our school that's impacted, there are other buildings, streets, there are a lot of things named Iroquois. Iroquois Shore, Iroquois Ridge, there's a lot of stuff. So the impact goes beyond. So based on everything I've just said, I do propose to, to make a motion after all my other fellow trustees speak, because I do see that there's a speakers list. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Rocha. And now I will go to Trustee Zhang.
Thank you, Chair. First, I want to say, because I work in Toronto office today, so I'm not aware of any updated information. When I read the report, what I can see is the report just lists all the, the regulations and the laws and guidelines. It doesn't say what is the reason and which article I can check with what the problem is. So what, and first is what, why we need to change the name. I didn't see from the report. It's not clearly articulated in the report. The other one, why it is the urgency. The urgency also is not, not very clear, why we need to do it today, because we have the deficit, so we need to, we have a lot of things, very important we need to do. This is the cost we also need to consider. This is, is this the right time? And this is the question. Also, like Trustee Rocha said, if we want to do, because you are the local trustee, you know more about the local community, if you believe that a study is needed, so I will support you. But as I, we can say, we can see in the next few months, we will have operational plan, the budget and the CAC and NYPD, a lot of important items is on the list. Do we really have the time to have an additional committee? So this is all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any response, Superintendent Proto?
Thank you through the chair to the trustees. We have, as stated in the original comments, consulted with our treaty partner, treaty partners and our Indigenous Studies Department. And so to speak to a few of the things that you're, you're bringing up, there are several other things in the, in Oakville specifically that are named Iroquois, and many, if not, well, all of them outside of the school name are out of our purview. So we have a responsibility to speak to our school name, but we can't manage what other people are calling things, roads, community centers, things like that. So we might actually be leading the way in being the people that are supporting the Indigenous people. The cost may have an initial price tag of $250,000, but a lot of that cost would come through schools anyway. When you're rebranding, renaming a school, which we've done before and we've seen, some of those things are new school shirts, which we reorder every year, the gym floor, which is a big expense but is redone multiple times, so when you're redoing that, you're, that's part of the cost that's built in here. So they're not costs isolated to this, they're costs that would have been incurred anyway, but are part of the renaming that you, you put into one big picture. But lastly, the discussion as to why, in consulting with our treaty partners, they pointed out that the term is derogatory, the term is offensive, and anti-Indigenous sentiment is systemic. And I do appreciate that Trustee Collard brought up residential schools. To know that it is an upsetting term to our Indigenous partners or treaty partners, and that they have stated that is something that we have to rely on and trust, and to debate, to bring it up, to discuss, only causes further harm. We have partners for a reason, we have built trust with these partners, and to debate the discussion brings up the term, brings up a lot of harm that is unnecessary, because we do believe what they say, and, and they have a lived experience that we can't begin to understand. Lastly, I see this name change as a crisis unity, great term that I have learned and used many times. When you change the name of a school, the ability for the school to come together and bond over what that name will be, and how to rebrand, and how to refocus, and how to come together as one community to really support that, is something I've seen as really powerful work, as, as well as really deep learning as to what systemic anti-Indigenous work has looked like in the past, and how to be supportive of calls to action. So that hopefully addresses a couple of the things that were brought up here.
Thank you. Moving on to Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. So as the trustee for probably the most recently renamed school, McQuendum, similar situation that the park next to the school also had a different name prior to the name change, and we did collaborate with the city, and they did name, change that name. So I do think, as Superintendent Proto said, it is an opportunity to, I don't necessarily think, look at it as leading the way, but build those relationships to look at how you have those discussions and move forward with that. And I'm struggling with this one little piece, because I don't, I don't know if this is going to talk about it, or if we talk about it when we start looking at the name change, because, again, I know that 250,000 sticker shock is a pretty big deal. But I'm wondering, because from my knowledge, and because I didn't ever know this before, is that they all call the school The Ridge. So in looking at a change, could we just, and I don't know, is this part of looking at a name change, or is this something that we can do to expedite? Could we not just take that word away and just call it The Ridge? Which, to me, I don't know. So just a suggestion that might be less costly, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you for the question and the suggestion, Trustee Shuttleworth. Certainly that would be a part of what flows from this meeting in terms of the ad hoc committee being formed according to the governance procedure, and any derivation off the name currently would be a part of the new name suggestions that would come forward to trustee for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Amos.
Thank you. So I think I'm probably one of the only ones that may have been around when Iroquois Ridge was named. So it was named after the land it was built on. The area used to be an ancient shoreline of Lake Iroquois, which was a glacial lake formed in the last ice age about 12,000 years ago. When the lake receded south to Lake Ontario, it left behind a ridge which was comprised of hill and forest. So when the school was built, it was named after the land it was situated on. So that is the history of the name, and I'm guessing the lake was named after our Indigenous partners, that would be my guess. So I am not against exploring changing the name, because I believe we have to create those partnerships. My concern is the cost, and I did speak to Superintendent Nagoy, and she did say the cost was much lower for McQuendum, but because it's a high school and there are things involved such as changing school floors and things like that, that could be part of what the cost. So apparently it's strictly an estimate, and depending on if they do keep the names such as The Ridge, they could keep their team names such as Trailblazers, and there may not be as much change needed as, so just to put it out there.
Thank you very much, Trustee Amos. Trustee Ahmed.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I see, like, I heard the explanation by Superintendent Collard, and I think if it is derogatory and disrespectful for Indigenous people, then we should strongly think about moving forward. But if Trustee Rocha wants to bring a motion to defer, I would support her motion, but as our superintendent said, more debate is only going to hurt the sentiments. So I'm torn here. I don't know what to do, but I would say the proper decision is taken. I am all in support of changing the name, and I know how the costs work, and hopefully it's not going to come up to a quarter of a million. But still, if it is seriously hurting a community that we love and respect and we partner with, we should move ahead with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Ahmed. Thank you very much, Trustee Ahmed. Trustee Danieli.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, through you to the Director. Dr. Ennis, we've heard a lot tonight about what it could mean to the community and the impact on the community and possibly come out of nowhere. But we've also heard some really, really good reasoning about not damaging our partners. So we've been looking at it from the community's perspective and our partners' perspective. But as the head of the organization, my question to you is that when we look at that umbrella piece as the whole corporation, could you speak to the cost versus reputational damage versus the community unrest? Just in that more general piece for us on that far-reaching governing piece that we have in terms of your thoughts on this?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Danieli. I see it resting in our commitment in the multi-year plan to Indigenous perspectives and awareness, understanding our work with our treaty partners. You know, when I look at the governance procedure, it's quite clear to me that a request came forward, the rationale was given that met the criteria according to our procedures, that this certainly was an appropriation. And derogatory wanted that, that requires us to take action. It met the criteria. That criteria was included in the rationale provided to the board of trustees. It is then up to the board of trustees to make the change. I think if we defer it, I worry, I do worry that our treaty partners will be further harmed by this. I do support what Superintendent Proto said earlier because we did our homework before we brought this forward. And so just to make sure that we were, you know, having the right mindset. And so I see it as continuously damaging and hurtful and harmful to the board as a whole. Should we continue with this after we've been told that this is harmful and hurtful? And should we choose to defer it? I do understand the concerns that were put forward on the table tonight. I, however, do not think that, I think that's part of the conversation that we have as we work through the change process.
And in your role as the financial steward of the board, would you mind speaking to the budget piece of it and the investment of the 250,000?
I do believe and I know that we are in a $7.7 million deficit position. And we are certainly working through that diligently, trying to find efficiencies and trying to be as effective as we can with every dollar. Certainly, you know, $250,000 in the larger context of the budget is really a small amount in terms of the budget as a whole. I know it seems like a large amount in isolation, but as a budget, it really is a .000 percentage. And so I think that we, through the various, whether it's facilities, you know, various other line items in the budget, we can certainly find that without further impacting or damaging the work that we will need to do to support students from a budgetary standpoint next year.
Thank you, Trustee Baxter.
Thank you, through the chair. I'm disappointed, I have to say, around this conversation that a report, as I would agree with Trustee Rocha, was very, very light on information. And trustees are being asked to make a decision that has what I feel is a significant financial impact. You know, the day after we had a CAC meeting in which members of the committee heard that there are potentially cuts to special education coming. And I'm, like I said, a little bit disappointed that the conversation is now being framed in terms of our respect for our treaty partners, which I have the utmost respect, not only for our treaty partners, but for our obligation to respect and to work towards reconciliation. I didn't hear any objection or concern around the table about changing a name that is hurtful and harmful. But I think the reality of being a trustee and certainly the least fun part of the job and for any board member on any organization is that we have a financial responsibility. And this is, unfortunately, triaging is just part of our job. And so it is unfortunate that we are now having this discussion. And like I said, you know, I don't think there's anyone in this board who would disagree that we need to move forward in reconciliation and we have to change the names of buildings that were misnamed and in very hurtful ways. But like I said, there's a financial impact. It's not negligible from what I'm seeing in the line items that we're considering for efficiencies. So I am concerned about doing this now and would be certainly in support of deferring if my colleagues around the table would agree with a firm commitment and reiteration to our treaty partners and the community as a whole that this is a priority. But we also have to prioritize special education and student-facing services. Thank you.
Thank you. First-time speaker, Trustee Bryden.
Thank you, Chair. The one thought that is bubbling through my head is that this is a one-time cost. And in the framework that was presented to us, we have been looking at separations between a structural deficit, which are ongoing costs, and one-time costs. And trying to avoid going into things that are not yet public. There is the possibility that this could arrive from accumulated surplus, could be covered from accumulated surplus in a way that ongoing costs cannot be in the short run. So it is possible that this may not impact at all our existing commitments to others, but would come out of accumulated surplus.
Thank you. Now, moving on to second-time speakers, Trustee Rocha.
Yeah, thank you. So through the chair. When we renamed McQuendum, I recall Trustee Shuttleworth and I asking or talking about it at committee of the whole to senior staff. And there was sort of a unwritten recommendation that senior staff were going to look at all of our school names to determine which ones were harmful. And perhaps Iroquois Ridge would have been on that list. So when this report came out on Friday, I called Margot and I said, whatever happened to that team that was looking at our list of names? Because to this date, we've never received that list. And no, it wasn't a motion, but it was more of a verbal commitment saying, yep, we're going to look at it. Because if we're changing McQuendum, we really need to look at the big picture of all of our schools. So to date, we haven't received that report. So when I look at this school naming request, what's to say next week, we're not going to get another email? And two months from now, we get another email? So what, my intention is, I'm not saying, don't rename it. I'm saying is that this report was incomplete. It shouldn't have come to board the way it was written. All of the additional verbiage we heard tonight should have been in the report. And so with that, I do want to put a motion on the floor, but I do understand that there are a couple of other speakers. So what I'll do is I'll let the other speakers speak and then I will be putting a motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Rocha. Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you, through your chair. I'm going to say it's probably to the Director. So this motion is asking to initiate a renaming process, which to me is initiating a conversation. Correct? So I'm just checking because what my wonderings are right now is having the conversation doesn't say, doesn't tell us what the outcome's going to be. So although I recognize the concerns around the report, but at the same time, if this is just starting a conversation, starting it sooner rather than later, to me, seems important. So, but I just wondered, this is not saying we are renaming the school. This is saying we are having a discussion around what to do about the school's name.
So thank you so much, Chair Shuttleworth, through the chair. Muscle memory, thank you. Trustee Shuttleworth, through Chair Collard. Certainly, this is the start of the conversation. That's why we're here. The conversation, we're not renaming any schools tonight. So that's quite clear. We cannot do that. We have a process that engages an ad hoc committee that would then take work away, bring back some recommendations. And from even then, there would be further conversations about, you know, the final decision-making. So this engages us in a protracted period of conversations, consultation and, you know, engagement. So that's, tonight is just the start of it. And it's certainly up to the board of trustees to determine whether we want to continue with this conversation or not.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Baxter.
Thank you, through the chair. So my question, I guess, as a follow-up, Director Ennis, is why is there a cost associated? The way the report is written is such that it appears that trustees are voting for a motion for which the report attached has a dollar amount. And that, for me personally, and I think others have expressed, is the sticking point and is the concern. It's not the renaming or the idea behind it. So would it be possible to bring a motion this evening to approve the start of the process, but the actual cost and approval of the expenditure come later at such time that we could consider the timing of that? Because it feels like we're rolling too many decisions into one report that, as Trustee Rocha mentioned, was a bit light on information.
Thank you for the commented question, Trustee Baxter. Certainly, the reason and the rationale why the cost is there is because it is directly written into the procedure. It asked us to make sure that we do that. That's a part of the, you know, the report. It said you should bring a report and also estimate what do you think this might cost you? So that frames part of the conversation that we're having tonight in terms of the decision-making that trustees will have to make. But Superintendent Proto, you wanted to add something?
Point of clarification. The motion we have before us is to initiate the renaming process, which means if we vote yes, a committee will be established and the school will be renamed. That's what this means. So there isn't further discussion on anything. It's to initiate the renaming process means that a committee will be formed with trustees, community members, staff members to start the renaming process. So there is no further discussion. It's a done deal. It's going to be renamed. That's what this means. Is that not what this means?
It means that the conversation has started. We will then bring back names. I mean, trustees ultimately, correct me, Manager Khan, trustees do have the final authority whether to accept or reject in the final analysis.
If I could provide a little bit of clarification. So the motion as it reads is to start the renaming process as outlined in the governance procedure. This is following that process. So if the Board of Trustees tonight decide to initiate that process, the committee will take the question back. They will seek community input. They will create a shortlist and bring that shortlist to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees then has the decision to make as to whether or not they would like to retain the name or whether or not they would like to consider renaming it based on whatever rationale is provided. So it's not, ultimately, the decision to rename is not tonight. It's to start the process to look at whether or not the name will ultimately change.
I would like to add to that that there's also in the GP the ability for trustees to say when they get the renaming report with the suggested shortlist, we don't like any of these shortlisted names, go back and do your work again. So there are many opportunities for trustees to reject a renaming at that point in time. Trustee Baxter, did you have more to say?
I guess then, following that, is the commitment to spend the money and when that process would happen? Is that included in that motion? That's what I'm trying to do. So as I framed it, we're in a deficit. So are we as trustees saying two things tonight? Not only that, yes, we approve moving forward to rename the school, which I think I'm personally in support of, but also go ahead and spend the money ASAP? So when would the, so if the names come back and there is a suitable one and trustees do choose a new name, is there going to be a step in which when that work will be done will be decided? Because as I said, depending what the cost is, we may have to make some difficult decisions around spending the money on that at that time or deferring that spend to a time when the board can afford it.
When the motion comes forward from staff indicating a shortlist of names, trustees can amend that motion to say that this action will take place six months from now, a year from now. We can amend any motion that we like or even substitute a motion if we wish. There are plenty of opportunities for trustees to change what is in front of them on the board report to be something that they deem to be better, more well-suited, preferable. And majority of trustees around the table voting for or against an item is what dictates what happens. Does that help? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Superintendent Proto.
Through the chair, speaking to the cost. Because I experienced this along with Trustee Shuttleworth and some others with McQuendum, and looking at the time of year that we're at right now, if the motion goes forward to rename the school and to respect what we've heard from our treaty partners in that we do make that commitment to our multi-year plan and to the hurt and harm we've caused and we want to repair that, the actual cost would not be until next year. This renaming process takes some time. And you would want a school to come together to talk about how to build out a plan with all stakeholders in full voice, even further if the name chosen was another Indigenous name, which we can't predict at this time because there's a lot that happens between now and then. You have to include the treaty partners in that aspect as well. So you want the learning to be embedded. Again, back to, this is a really fantastic teachable moment and not a single dime would be spent. What they would do is not move forward probably in purchasing anything else that has the current school name. So the sooner that you can put this in place, the more that they will stop spending. That would end up being a waste of money. But then it wouldn't start until next year that they would look at it. And then second, as mentioned before, it's not a standalone cost of whatever it ends up being, 250, 260. That's a very rough estimate. A lot of those costs are incurred anyway. So a lot of those are already built into multiple budgets within the school, outside of the school, for upgrading the school. So it is a one-time thing for part of it. And others, this would just be part of what was spent within the budget that already exists.
Thank you. And I think we're now down to final speaker, Trustee Rocha.
Yeah, so through you, Chair. I still haven't received a response, and I don't know if I'm going to get one tonight, about the commitment to look at all of our names. The other thing I want to add is, was it a member of the Indigenous community who made this request? Do we know that?
So we do not have any permission to share at this time the name of the person who made the request. And with respect to your, I didn't know you asked a question about the names. I thought you were just commenting.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So I can respond to that. Certainly, you know, I do remember the conversation about looking at all school names. It's not an exercise that I think we should, you know, embark on at this time. I mean, for many of the reasons that have been cited here, if you think doing one school is, you know, financially is, you know, financially irresponsible at this time, think about doing tens of schools. It would be an enormous cost. I, I think what we, the process we have in place to look at things as they come up, I think is a good one. And I, I, I think that's the way that we should continue as a board.
Trustee Rocha, do you have further comment?
Yeah, I'm going to continue. So on one hand, I'm seeing, I'm hearing that it's irresponsible for us to go ahead and change all of our names. And on the other hand, I'm hearing that we should make amends quickly. So it's two opposing ideas there. With that note, I did say I was going to make a motion and so I'd like to move a motion. I did share my motion with everyone via email, so if you'd like to follow along, that would be great. So I move to refer the motion to an ad hoc committee to further research the Iroquois Ridge High School renaming request and report back to the board no later than December 31st, 2024. The purpose of the committee is to research the history of the name and to consult with local partners, including Indigenous treaty partners, as well as the town of Oakville. The committee of four to seven members should be composed of the Oakville Ward 6 trustee, up to one additional trustee, the superintendent of education for Iroquois Ridge High School, one to two members of the communications team, and one to two members of the Indigenous rights and education team. And I so move.
Is there a seconder for this motion? Trustee Baxter, thank you. Now, that means that everyone that currently on the speakers list, we're, we are now looking at a motion to defer. So if you wish to speak to deferral, um, I'm going to write down your names and I'm going to clear the list and then we can get everyone to, do you want to remove yourself? This is about the deferral? Okay. If you wish to speak to the deferral, I'm, I'm resetting so that everyone will be a first-time speaker. Please put, um, press your button and we can speak to the deferral. Vice Chair Oliver.
Okay, thank you, uh, through your chair. So in my limited research of this term, I, I have learned that it is a derogatory name. The report states as much and, um, the report clearly outlines the reasons and the moral grounds for changing the name, including national and international statutes. A derogatory term is a derogatory term. I do not need to research it further. So we're also hearing from our Indigenous, um, partners, elders, the Indigenous education advisors about the importance of changing the name to align with Indigenous perspectives, origins, and history. So what more do we need in order to take action? I appreciate that we are in a deficit position, but I think, um, Superintendent, um, Proto spoke to that. Thank you. And delaying, um, this action, what message does it send to, um, our Indigenous partners about HCSB's values and about our commitment to one of our multi-year plan commitments, which specifically is dedicated to Indigenous perspectives and awareness? Further, to pick up on Superintendent Proto's opportunity regarding a teachable moment, I am also aware that there is a local project underway aligned with the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's calls to action. This is an Oakville project called, I hope I pronounced it correctly, uh, Deb Weewen, the Oakville Truth Project. It is a community approach to truth and reconciliation between Mississauga's Credit First Nation and Oakville. It's based on the allyship and reciprocity of the original treaties. It seems to me that respecting a call to remove a derogatory term from the name of one of our schools, the HCSB as an education community, would be doing its part in taking meaningful steps to respond to the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's calls to action in the education system. Thank you.
Thank you, um, trustee Amos.
Thank you. I have a few concerns with the actual motion. I believe I actually explained the history of the name, so I'm not sure what more can be really researched into it because there wasn't a lot more to it. And the town of Oakville, um, I believe named their facilities because of the school that was in the area. So if we change the name, they may follow, um, but that's up to them. But, um, the two don't, we're, two don't go hand in hand. I mean, the town does what they want to do and we will do what we want to do. So those two pieces of the motion, um, and I also don't know that we need to wait till the end of December 2024. So anyways, I just wanted to bring those points in.
Thank you, trustee Shuttleworth.
And I'll just be really quick. Can I look at this motion? And I, I, I understand and I recognize the concerns about the cost. But when I look at this motion, I almost wonder, are those not parameters for looking at who to involve in the renaming review? So if it's a conversation, again, I think, I think part of the concern is, is that, um, when we talk about this, we talk about renaming a school versus a renaming process. We're just engaging in the process, in my opinion. I might be wrong. We're engaging in the process, which is the discussion. But we're conflating it or making it difficult to see because we often talk about, we're going to rename the school. So I think recognizing that we are just going into the process, looking at what we are doing to find a means to, and as trustee Baxter said, 100% we want to get rid of harmful and hurtful language and discriminatory words. And I look at this and I think, can this not be used to inform the committee that we're forming? So that's just my, how we can find somewhere down the middle. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Shuttleworth. And as there are no other speakers on the list, I just want to say, um, regarding a motion to defer or refer to a committee, um, a, a little maxim comes to mind when I think about this, and that is justice delayed is justice denied. And that means that if relief to an injured party is available, but purposely delayed, it is the same as having no remedy at all. And because of that, and because in my heart, I've, and what I've heard around this table, everyone agrees the school should be renamed. If everyone agrees the school should be renamed, then the deferral becomes moot, especially since we know we don't have to spend the dollars immediately. And so for that reason, I cannot support a deferral. And seeing no further speakers on the list unless you wish to close with a statement, trustee Rocha.
I do wish to close with a statement. So just to, to counter, uh, so trustee Oliver, yes, I do understand it's a derogatory term. I think we all understand that. To the point of trustee Amos, um, sharing the history, thank you for sharing that. I would have expected to see that in the report, not a verbal update from you, but I appreciate it. And I, it goes back to when we get these reports, we need to get fulsome reports. As to by December 31st, I'm being generous. It could be next month. I'm, I put in a date so that it could come at any time before then. So let's not think of December 31st. And to causing harm, so the person who made the request to rename the school wasn't a member of our community, of the Indigenous community. So when we talk about we've caused harm, the Indigenous, I know we're being proactive, but it wasn't the Indigenous community that came to us with this request. We have an Indigenous team. Not once have we heard from them saying our school names are harmful. And I would hope that some, the Indigenous team would let us know which names are harmful. So we, we're not sitting around this table having this debate. And that goes with any name of our school. So to say we caused harm, um, I wouldn't say we caused harm. We're aware of the harm. And I'm not saying not to rename it. I think we need to give this more thought as to how we can approach the renaming. And to go back to trustee Shuttleworth's question about the motion, the original motion, the initiating the renaming of the process is, a committee will be formed. They will come up with suggestions. So the next time we see this, we will have three to five new names on a piece of paper. Um, and we will be asked to choose from one of them or to send it back and give us another go-round. So that's what the main motion is. So I, I wanted to clear that up before we voted on the motion I made. Thank you.
Did you wish to speak, Director Ennis?
Yes, no, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, trustee Rocha, we, we, the requested did not identify themselves. And so I think it would not be wise for us to assume that they don't identify as Indigenous.
Okay, so I'm going to put the motion on the machine for people to vote on. Just give me a second. Please cast your votes. And that is not unanimous. The yes votes for that are trustee Zhang and trustee Baxter, and the no votes are trustee Amos, trustee Daniele, trustee Ahmed, trustee Bryden, trustee Gray, trustee Collard, and trustee Shuttleworth. Yes?
I voted yes, and my name's not on there.
I, okay. Another yes vote is trustee Rocha, and we seem to be missing one student vote and, um, another trustee. Which trustee are we missing? If you see your name's not there, shout out. Oh, trustee Oliver.
My name's not there.
Trustee Oliver. And, and yes, I can see you voted no. I can see it. I don't know why it didn't record them. Trustee Shubalan. Okay, so trustee Shubalan also voted no. Trust, uh, vice chair Oliver voted no and trustee Rocha voted yes. I'm not sure why it didn't record them all because they all show as checked off here. So I don't know why. So that motion does not carry. Back to the original motion. And I'll read it again. Be it resolved that the board initiate the renaming process for the secondary school at 1123 Glen Ashton Drive, Oakville, in accordance with the board's naming and renaming schools, policy, and governance procedure. Please cast your votes. Oh. Okay. Do people still wish to speak, the ones that were on the speakers list before? Okay, I will cancel the voting. We will go back. My apologies. Okay. I'm sorry, trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you through your chair. And I'm, I'm kind of lost in the, lost in the moment because we've, we've gone so many different directions, but I'm coming back to the motion, uh, or the discussion that Tanya spoke of that we had. Did we forget it was November of 2021? December of 2021? And my concern there is, is that having that knowledge and understanding is that proactive approach that we are speaking of. And I, I, you know, again, it's not about spending the money yet, but it's just knowing what's out there. So knowing what's out there. So I, I do have concern with the idea of not re-explooring that. And I do think that at our next meeting that I might take a look and hopefully trustee Rocha will help me with that, is taking a look at bringing that motion or whatever it was back to the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Shuttleworth. And now, seeing no other speakers on the speakers list, and I am looking fervently because I don't want to make the same mistake twice. I am going to take us back to the motion, set the topic, and ask everyone to vote, please. Thank you very much. And that is not unanimous. Voting in favor is trustee Amos, trustee Daniele, trustee Ahmed, trustee Bryden, trustee Gray, myself, trustee Shuttleworth, trustee Baxter, and vice chair Oliver. Voting against trustee Zhang and trustee Rocha. Thank you very much, everyone. As well as the student trustees both voted in favor. Thank you. Now I'd like to call like a five-minute recess because I think we all need one.
Up to Manager Tibo in regards to space. So I'm just wondering if this will impact space at either these schools in either positive or negative ways. So the freeing up of, it's not a large space at Aldershot, but will that be helpful or a hindrance? And the same with it. Central, will having those extra students, because it's such an old building, and I'm assuming that the rooms might be a little bit smaller, be more of a hindrance? Like, will the population impact schooling?
Through Madam Chair, to Trustee Shottleworth, obviously, there's going to be a little bit of an increase in population at Burlington Central, but I'd say it wouldn't be a sizable one, especially these are senior grades. We're going to be able to provide a greater number of students per classroom. It's not like the issues we have with the primary grades where we're capped at 23, which, you know, not only necessitates additional staff, but additional rooms. I don't see it being an issue. When we were reviewing it overall as an enrollment, the enrollment impacts, it was really immaterial, I would say, because the number of students that actually want to go to Burlington Central. So I'd say you probably have a larger retention, or probably half of the students are going to be staying at Aldershot High School for grade seven and eights now, and the other half will be going to Burlington Central. So you're almost splitting the students in half. Those that are committed to continuing on with the program throughout the high school career will, you know, will stay. And even then, we might even see them drop off between grade eight and grade nine as well. Like, that's something we do see quite often. So to answer your question in short, I don't think it has a significant impact on accommodations, and there is room at both facilities to accommodate these students.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further speakers on the list, I will put up the item for a vote. And this time, I triple-checked to make sure there were no other names. Please cast your votes. Robbie, your vote didn't go through. Thank you very much. That is unanimous. Thank you very much, Manager Tibo, for your work on this. The next item is 4.1.4 Cybersecurity and Data Protection Policy. Report 24033 submitted by Superintendent Schoss, and I'll put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees adopt the revised cybersecurity and data protection policy and revoke all prior versions. Trustee Zhang, would you like to make this motion?
Yes, I would.
Trustee Daniele, would you second this motion?
Yes, I would.
Superintendent Schoss, would you like to speak to your report?
Thanks. Through the chair, to all trustees. So just as a reminder why this is back. You remember several weeks ago now, I brought forward the original version of this and the admin procedure that accompanied it, and we voted and put in place our first cybersecurity data protection policy and AP, and we have leveraged it already several times. So thank you for supporting that. But I did commit at the time, there were some late edit suggestions that I didn't have time to consider, and committed at the board meeting to considering those and building them into the policy with a little bit of time and reflection. I'd like to thank Trustee Bryden for making those suggestions. They've been incorporated in full in this new policy before you, and happy to take any further questions. Thank you.
And seeing no speakers, I will set the topic. And please cast your votes. Thank you. That passed unanimously. We will now move on to 4.1.5 Fair Funding Committee Action Plan. Report 24034 submitted by Trustee Amos, and I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board of Trustees approve the action plan proposed by the Fair Funding Committee as appended to Report 24034. Trustee Amos, would you like to make this motion?
Yes, please.
Vice Chair Oliver, would you second this motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. And Trustee Amos, would you like to speak to this report?
Yes, please. I'm very happy to be bringing this report to you, and I'd like to say that this report is a culmination of quite a bit of work from the committee, and Vice Chair Oliver and Trustee Bryden, and our very important always guest, Superintendent Nagoy, and as well as help from General Manager Francie. We have made great strides in moving forward on identifying some of the issues around the funding, and have created this action plan so that we can start to do some education and advocacy for our board. So we have broken it down, as you, if you have a look, down to three pieces. One is advocacy with the provincial government, one is with our own community, and the other was with provincial stakeholders, because there's some commonalities, and we believe that others may be interested in doing some advocacy as well. So anyways, the report is before you. Other ways of advocacy are always welcome. If you have suggestions, the committee is hard at work, as you can see, doing quite a few things. But if you have any questions, please let us know.
Trustee Daniele.
I just want to say thanks for this report and let you know that last week, Trustee Gray and I were at the Ontario Public School Board Association's Board of Directors meeting. And on the Friday evening, we always have a mini regional meeting, and we talk about what's going on in our regions. And Trustee Gray did bring up the fair funding work and the work that your committee is doing, and there was a great deal of interest in it from our OPSA partner boards. So I'm very, very pleased to see OPSA and other boards of education listed in this action plan. I think that's a great step. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no other speakers, I will set the topic. And please cast your vote. Thank you very much. And next on our agenda is Trustee Expenses and Student Trustees Governance Procedures. Report 24035 submitted by Trustee Bryden. And I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board of Trustees approve the revised trustee expenses governance procedure and student trustee governance procedure and revoke all prior versions as outlined in Report 24035. Trustee Bryden, would you make this motion?
I would.
And Trustee Baxter, would you second this motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bryden, would you like to speak to this report?
I think everything is in the report.
Thank you, Trustee Bryden. Is there any debate? Seeing none, I will move us on to voting. Please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is 4.1.7 Terms of Reference for Chair and Vice Chair. Report 24036 submitted by myself and Vice Chair Oliver. There were some changes made due to comments and suggestions from trustees at committee in the whole and since then, and so I hope everyone had an opportunity to review those changes. And I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees append the board governance bylaw with the terms of reference for the Chair and Vice Chair as outlined in Report 24036, and I saw a move. Vice Chair Oliver, would you second this motion?
I second the motion.
Vice Chair Oliver, do you have any comments regarding this motion?
I do not. I think everything is in there. Thank you.
Very much. And seeing no speakers, I will put the motion on the machine. Thank you very much, everybody. Please cast your votes. And that motion passes unanimously. We are now up to Section 5.0 Communication to the Board. There are no notices of motion for this evening's meeting, and so we will move directly to 5.2 Directors' Report.
Thank you, Chair Collard, and good evening, everyone. Just wanted to start with some sad news. Unfortunately, we have a couple of students who have passed away since our last time together. We have Finley van der Werken from Aldershot High School, and we have a student from TA Blakelock. Finley was a student at Aldershot who touched so many people's lives with his caring heart and sincere friendship. Finley was always there to support others going through a hard time. It was one of his superpowers. Finley leaves behind so many people who loved him, who looked up to him, whom he cherished deeply. And for the student from TA Blakelock, it is with a deep sense of, deep sorrow and a profound sense of loss that we share the news that one of our students passed away this past Friday night. Our thoughts are with the student's family and the entire TA Blakelock High School community at this very difficult time. Let's pause for a moment of silence for these two students. Thank you. The Directors' Cut Episode 12, which focused on learning and achievement, is out. It is a wonderful, masterful piece of work. Our thanks to the communication and engagement team for the work that they do in supporting our multi-year strategic plan and our focus area. I'm going to ask Superintendent Roderick, whose leadership in this area was a focal point of this particular video, to speak about this.
Thank you, Director Ennis, and to trustees. This Directors' Cut highlights a project, Search, which is a program located out of the hospital in Oakville. It is for our students with developmental delays that are in their final year of schooling with the Halton District School Board. And they work alongside the hospital partners, as well as our other community partner, Community Living Oakville. And they learn skills that they're able to apply either in that setting or in workplaces beyond the hospital. It is such a successful program that we have been recognized as having the best gainful employment rate out of that program in all of North America. And we have been selected by the Ministry of Education to mentor other school boards across Ontario in implementing this program. So it's a really wonderful program for our students. We're incredibly proud of it, and we really appreciate the recognition we've received from the ministry and from the organization itself. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Roderick. We also like to recognize Teacher Ashley Stevenson, Teacher of Dr. Frank J. Hayden, inducted into the Canadian Baseball Hall of Fame. We've spoken about Ashley before, in her exploits, and so we want to say congratulations to Ashley in continuing to do amazing things and accomplish wonderful things. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to be at the Halton Skills Competition, where over 700 students in the elementary panel were there. And I know I saw Chair Collard, I saw Trustee Amos, I saw Trustee Bryden. I'm not sure how.
I'm wearing the t-shirt.
Oh, you're wearing the t-shirt?
I'm wearing the t-shirt.
Oh, fantastic. You were a judge. I know you were a judges. I don't know how many of you, others of you had the opportunity to be there, but it was an amazing, amazing event. The creativity, ingenuity, just brilliance of our young people in our schools is worth telling. And so if you haven't had an opportunity to see it, I'm sure one of the focus area was to capture all of the great things happening. So please make sure you see the video when it comes out, because the Halton students are doing great work, the teamwork, the camaraderie, just the things that we exemplify and want to see in our young people was on full display. So congratulations to all those who were involved in the planning and the coordination of this tremendous effort. It was a day full of fun, excitement, and learning. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. And I see no speakers. So, well done. Now we're up to 5.3 Communications from the Chair. As trustees know, I have circulated a request for comments from the Ministry of Education regarding regulatory and policy reforms to support Better Schools and Student Outcomes Act, otherwise known as Bill 98. And I wanted to bring them forward at our meeting this evening and check in with trustees and make sure that we all fully understand what these changes might mean in our school board, and determine whether or not, through conversation this evening, we wish to make a submission to the province. And so I am going to just open up the floor, and I will take it from there. And if there are no questions, then there are no questions. Trustee Bryden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, there's a, it's almost a throwaway paragraph at the end of the Regulation on Electronic Meetings that says, oh, yes, and we will bring something forward stating that all trustees must be present for all meetings in person unless one of these three exceptions applies. And I look at that and go, I think that's a terrible idea. If my babysitter cancels at the last minute, if one of our trustees who works in Toronto hits a traffic jam or go train cancellation, we would rather have those people participating online than not have them participating at all. So I think we would be advised to ask for some. I agree that, as is the case already in this room, most trustees should be in person most of the time, but that flexibility should be provided and not just limited to the narrow three reasons proposed by the province.
Thank you very much for those comments. Trustee Bryden, Trustee Zhang.
Thank you. So like the electric meeting, I believe this is an important step, but it's a small step. So it changed the distance from the residence area to location to the board meeting, board office, from 200 kilometer to 125 kilometer. So, but it is still, I believe this is, this change is benefit for the trustees living in the northern Ontario. But in the urban area, this is, this is not possible. The board doesn't have this large area. Also, there's a, it doesn't consider one situation, for example, like myself. My residential area, the location is close to the board office, but I work in Toronto, actually. So this is, if, that's, so for me, it's not possible to come back to Burlington to chair a meeting. So that means I lose the chance to chair a committee. So the purpose of the electric meeting, actually, why we need one person onsite, we need, this is give the public a chance to come to the boardroom to see our, the meeting, and that they can listen to our meeting discussion, to keep all the meetings' information transparent. But if we, we can still do that, because now we have the technology. And the technology, if all the boards, we can have the technology to allow other people to livestream. So if we have the technology ready, should allow us all of the board to have the electric meeting, no matter what the distance is. Because we have so many committees, and we cannot just for every committee in the morning come to chair a meeting, and then in the afternoon come back again. So for the efficiency and the transparency, if the technology is ready, we should ask that the provincial government give us more chance to have an election meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to ask if anyone had any comment on the use of integrity commissioners, should we ever need to use the Code of Conduct? Because that, to me, seemed an extremely problematic issue, and I would, I would, I don't want to be the one planting the seed. I would like trustees to bring forward their thoughts on that without me telling you what I think first. And if nobody, oh, there we go. Trustee Amos.
Thank you. I think if they would like to have an integrity commissioner supervising political figures, they should open it up to all elected officials, not just trustees. And they have to be willing to pay for it, because it cannot be a cost assumed by boards. We don't have the money to pay for it. So therefore, we need to make sure that if this is the route they're going, they have to provide the funds for it. But we also need to make them aware that this needs to be applicable to all, you know, to all elected officials, not just trustees.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
I think the piece that disturbs me about this is that the ministry proposing to prefer the services of an executive search firm, and trustee associations provided the opportunity to review the ministry's proposed list of candidates. Opportunity to review, not opportunity to really have valuable input. I have some real concerns. I know that we're in a bit of a crisis mode in Ontario in not having judges that we need. So I am concerned about an ambiguous process to create qualified candidates for an integrity commissioner roster. There's just, there's nothing in there that tells me what they see as qualified candidates, who's going to be doing this, anything along those lines. That is one of the bigger concerns for me, and the fact that the trustee associations, and as you all know, we are a member of OPSA, which I believe is the largest trustee association in Ontario, would simply have the opportunity to review. That's not meaningful, in my opinion.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. On Friday, as Trustee Daniele has spoken about, we had conversations at OPSA, and we loosely addressed the comment here about a maximum amount by which a trustee's honorarium could be reduced as a sanction for breaching the Code of Conduct. And we talked about how this was, it certainly was an undignified approach to solving a problem. And we talked about when there's such little amount being paid to trustees, and an amount that has been frozen since, I believe, 2006, that this is, it's quite punitive and could be quite punitive. And there was very little support in the conversation that I was in regarding that particular aspect of this.
Thank you very much. So I'm starting to think that perhaps, oh, Trustee Daniele, you've got back on.
I just wanted to say the biggest quote that we heard out of the conversation we had about the reduction of the honorarium is that 25% of nothing is still nothing.
Yes, sadly, true. So I'm wondering if we think we might wish to write a response to this, and perhaps send it to the Ministry of Education, but also to all of our partner boards throughout the province, not just through OPSA, but through all of the four school board associations, including specifically to MPPs from Halton as well, and OSA ECO. And so I'm going to put such a motion on the floor. I haven't got all the words yet, but I said basically what it is that I want to do. And I'm looking for a second. Thank you. Vice Chair Oliver is seconding that motion. Is there any discussion? Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. I know that you have circulated to all trustees for input, and I would really recommend that everybody take the chance to offer the input so that our chair may write a very well-positioned response on behalf of the entire board. So that's out there, and maybe if that was resent to everyone as a jog reminder, the comments would start flowing. Thank you.
Just to point a border.
Thank you very much.
Chair Collard, if you're going to make a motion, you have to pass the gavel.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we got to vote for it now?
Yeah.
Do we have the motion ready?
Do we have the motion ready?
Okay. And as Trustee Gray pointed out, it'd be great if anybody with comments would please submit them in writing to assist the chair in the crafting of this letter. Thank you.
Sir, can you repeat the motion that's on the table?
I will be, yes. The motion is, be it resolved that the chair write a letter and copy response. That's. That's an abbreviation of the motion. The motion is for the chair to write a response to the Ministry of Education ceasing all trustee associations in the province of Ontario, as well as OSA ECO, regarding the three items listed in the regulatory and policy reforms to support the Better Schools and Students' Outcome Act 2023, school board trustee code of conduct and integrity commissioner process, and proposed regulatory amendments to OREG 46397, electronic meetings and meeting attendance. And you may vote. That carries unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. And now we move on to committee updates. Are there any committee updates for statutory or staff-led committees? And seeing no speakers, we will move on to the OPSA update. Is this OPSA that you want to speak to? No? Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Earlier tonight, in the Inspire Awards, I mentioned that the fruition of all the work of our committee has now come to an end. We are now live, and I wanted and missed doing so earlier to thank the Communications Department, who were so integral in helping us every step of the way in making sure that we have these changes, and also in the production of that video. So we offer our thanks to them, and we look forward to the first round of Inspire Award nominations using our new path forward. And I think we may need to bring this up at a future committee of the whole, as we have to review the scoring process. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Gray. We have an OPSA report?
We had a very successful OPSA meeting on Friday and all day Saturday. There's a lot of things that were covered, and a summary of all of the materials will be coming out shortly to everyone. I would like to put in a very strong recommendation that folks consider attending the next OPSA meetings, which I don't have the, go ahead, Donna.
Thank you very much. The next OPSA, may I, Madam Chair? The next OPSA regional meeting will be on April 6th. It will be in Branford. It is my understanding that arrangements have been made to have it at the Woodlands Cultural Center. So there will be a great deal of, I saw heads perk up on that one. So it'll be a great deal of learning to do for anyone who is not, anyone, any trustee can attend the regional meetings. It's a great opportunity to network with your fellow trustees. And 8:30 is usually coffee and muffins program from 9 to 12, and usually lunch thereafter. But you can or cannot stay with your choice. So it's really a good idea. There is a save the date going out this week from OPSA on my behalf.
Thank you very much, Trustees Gray and Daniele. And now we move up to trustee questions and comments for public session. Trustee Zhang.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions. So first is regarding, we have, today we can see, we see a report about the safe school and in the school, and the data, actually, we don't have a detailed data. So in a lot of the board reports, we don't have enough. So in a lot of the board reports, we don't have enough data to support our decision. And so in the, I just like to know, this is technology constraints or we have any legal concerns or we have, so what kind of database we keep all the data? So because in the OPAFA Good Governance Book, it says the board, we need to do evidence-based decision-making. So we need evidence, we need more data to know what is happening. So it give us the, like, this is give us the evidence, we know where we can set the priority and how we can improve it. So this is my first question.
Thank you so much for the question, trustee Zhang. Certainly, we are always on a quest to create more data. You referenced a report that came tonight in terms of wanting to see more data. Superintendent Fowler mentioned that, you know, a report is coming in April that will provide more information. We do not have some of the infrastructures that captures some data in the kinds of ways that perhaps we need to. That's something that we're continuously working on.
Okay. So my second question is, because on the school board, the board and the schools, we have the PD sessions, PD day. So for the PD day now, after the Bill 98 in effect, the school board need to send the reports to the provincial government. So where can we access the report?
Thank you for the question, trustee Zhang. We are working through that with senior staff. Certainly, we understand the ministry is asking for these to be publicly, public facing, and we will comply. So once we have it all worked out, we will let you know how and when to find the information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I think we have, go ahead, General Manager.
Through the chair, just to add that the PA days are listed on our website, all the topics at least two weeks before each PA day.
Yes, I saw that, I know the schools, they have, for the webs, the school board website, the PD, the session, the webpage is very simple, actually, it does not, I checked that, there's no, not no detailed information, just a few lines.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers, we will head into private session. So trustee Ahmed, would you make a motion to go into committee of the whole private session respecting personal matters and negotiation matters?
I move the motion, Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Zhang, would you like to second this motion?
Yes, I would.
Are there any objections to moving into private session? Seeing none, the motion is passed by unanimous consent, and we are now in private session. Maestro Oliver, the floor is yours. Thank you very much. We'll take a five-minute break. See you back at 8:35.
Thank you and welcome back to public session for March the 6th, 2024. We have moved to the point in our agenda where we approve business transacted in committee of the whole private session. Vice Chair Oliver, do we have any business from private session that requires approval?
Yes, we have two items. The first be, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the resolution from the Halton District School Board's private session, March 6th, 2024, respecting negotiations, report 24037, an ISO move.
Trustee Baxter, would you second this motion?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Thank you.
And the second is, be it resolved...
I've set the item. Please cast your vote. Thank you. Thank you, and that is final, and it is unanimous. That's a very strange looking screen there. One of the student trustees didn't log out. There it is. There we go. Okay. That's funny. And the second item?
Be it resolved that the Halton School Board of Trustees accept and approve the director's goals for the 2023-24 school year as approved in the Halton District School Board's private session, March 6th, 2024, which will be appended to the minutes as well as posted to the board's website, an ISO move.
Trustee Gray, would you second this motion?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Is there any debate? Seeing none, I will set the topic. Please cast your vote. Thank you. Thank you very much, that passes unanimously. And now we have reached section 7.0, adjournment. And as our agenda is exhausted, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.